Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Harrison Township Planning Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, September 1st, 2022. We'll call this special meeting to order at 7:04. Roll call, please, Ms. O'Parka.
Member Batra, excuse. Member Douglas.
President.
Member Blue.
Here.
Member Mulder.
Here.
Member Tomino.
Here.
Member O'Parka, here. Chair Murray.
President, thank you very much. May I have approval of the agenda as presented, please?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Tomino, supported by Mr. Mulder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first hearing and review this evening. Ms. O'Parka.
Case number 16-22-PUD, Common Sale Investment Groups 26755 Ballards.
Thank you. This is a final review of the proposed PUD for Affordable Independent Living. And before we get started, I'm just going to take a moment and please ask you all to be mindful of your comments when the applicant is up and talking, or anyone from the side table, or anyone from this table is speaking. I'm hoping that you will all be very respectful. Let's show each other how good we can be. Please keep your comments to yourself. If you want to chit chat, please feel free to step out into the bus field or outside. Let's keep our negative comments. We understand the passion tonight, so let's all just try and get through this. All right. Mr. Toomey. Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are you today?
Good, nice to see you again today.
Nice to see you, too.
We currently have our public hearing still open from our last meeting. We're going to, we would like to address a couple of the items, the changes only. And then we're going to allow the public to address the changes only. And I'm going to stress this because last time at the public hearing, we heard a lot about, we heard everyone. I think we took 32 separate comments. And so we're going to ask you not to readdress those issues that you brought forward during the first meeting. We have them down on paper. We have them. And so tonight, we're going to be addressing just the new items. And so with that, Mr. Young, may I please count on you to give a little PUD?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is a planned unit development request submitted by a common sale investment group. The property is a little over five acres in size along the north side of Ballard Street. We've heard them before. They do have a presentation planned this evening to share their proposed development, which will be a senior independent living complex, proposing 74 total units in one building that is three stories in height. The units will be age restricted, 55 and over units. This is, the site is presently zoned RM1, multiple family residential district. Within the RM1 district, in a special land use, is planned unit development. So that is one of the options that any person with property zoned RM1 could seek to develop their property under the planned unit development option as a special land use. So that procedure is a two-step procedure. There is an initial preliminary review, and then there is the final PUD plan review. We are at the final PUD plan review stage. State law required, in our zoning ordinance, requires a public hearing to be noticed in the paper and letters sent out to the surrounding property owners and held by the planning commission. You opened it last month. It is still open this evening. Ultimately, the planning commission will be asked, or the ordinance requires the planning commission to utilize a variety of review standards to consider the request and ultimately provide a recommendation of approval or denial. That recommendation goes to the township board. The township board at a regular meeting would have final say in approving or denying this planned unit development request. So that is the procedure. I'll turn it back to you, unless you have any questions for me at this point.
Members, any questions for the planning? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Toomey. Are you the applicant who will be, are you the presenting?
Yeah, I am the applicant. Yeah, there are a couple of us presenting, so you'll have myself, you'll have Kevin Noack, who is the executive director of Cleveland Housing, or CHN Housing Partners. Can you hear me?
And since we are minus our microphones this evening, my eyes are projected.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I have no problem talking about as many people now. So CHN Housing Partners, so Eric Noack will also present, will make that introduction. And then Blake Hatterman, who is here. You've previously, I've had Jim Pappas from Fusco Pappas Schaefer present to you, but he'll be presenting the changes. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to do more of an introduction of who CHN Housing Partners is.
Okay, thank you.
Get yourselves together here. Hi, I'm Kevin Noack, executive director of CHN Housing Partners. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. So CHN Housing Partners, you know, I'll talk about in a little bit, but just wanted to give a little bit of my background, too. Born and raised in Detroit. Both my grandparents, both my grandpas worked the Ford Rouge plant on the line. Both my grandmas worked in the kitchen. You know, big old Polish family. My father was a Detroit police officer. My mom was a secretary at a Catholic grade school. Went to Catholic Central, went on to U of M. And I know that this has been something, it's been a difficult process for everybody. You know, my dad was a Detroit cop and, you know, public safety concern's always been part of our life. And so, you know, and my grandparents, when I, when they lived in Dearborn, they had a single-family home, right? They built 1956. And right next to them, a large senior developer, that was about six, seven stories tall, came in, right? It was built. And my grandparents had concerns about it. And, you know, and I can understand that, right? And then, you know, but then, as they lived and they learned, and they learned about the development that came in next to them, and then, you know, they lived in that house for 50-plus years later, they ended up seeing the value in it over time. And so, you know, what I wanted to bring to you today was a little bit of our experience, a little bit of kind of my background, and also about CHN Housing Partners. And first, start with, I hear you, right? You know, I started doing affordable housing back after I got done with school, and, you know, I did the lawyer thing, I did the banker thing, but it really was about helping people who otherwise have a hard time being able to afford their housing, have stable, affordable housing that they can live in. And our organizing principle is called the power of permanent address, right? So that power of permanent address, really, we believe helps change lives and improves communities. And, you know, and what we try to do is to work in whatever neighborhood, in whatever community that we're working in. We work in suburban areas, we work in rural areas, we work in inner cities, but it's really about trying to address the need within the community that we're working in. We've been doing that for 41 years. We have a proven track record of it. We keep growing. And, you know, we serve 50,000 people annually. You know, we've helped develop 700, or 7,000 units of housing primarily affordable. We've helped 2,700 people become homeowners. So when we're thinking about housing, we're not just thinking about rental housing, we're also thinking about homeownership. And we understand the value of that housing, both to the people that are living in it and the communities that they live in. So, you know, and the city officials, where we have worked in the neighborhoods that we've lived in, really have seen our developments over time as assets in their communities. You know, we work in, we work here in the Detroit area, we work in Ohio, where we were founded, we're in Western Pennsylvania, we're in Western New York. And, you know, for me personally, I grew up here, my family still lives here, so I have still a heart remaining here in Detroit and in its suburbs. As we all know, housing is getting more expensive. Everything's getting more expensive, right? Food's more expensive, you know, housing is more expensive, just, you know, gas is out of control, utilities, everything. There was an article about how utilities are more expensive than they have ever been, and more people never can afford them. But when you're a senior who's on a fixed income, that's especially hard. And that's who we're trying to serve here. That's retired teachers and cops. That's someone that, you know, worked on the line. That's someone who worked in an office. But that's what this development is going to serve. That's what we want to kind of center on, right? That's, is, the people, it's your family members, right? It's your mom, your dad. It's my Aunt Lorraine, who, you know, who grew up and had cerebral palsy, and needs help being able to, you know, pay for her housing. And what we want to be able to do is to help people remain in our communities as they age, right? And as they have these fixed incomes. With everything getting more expensive, taxes getting higher, you know, it becomes more, it becomes harder for people to be able to live there. And so when we're looking at who this will serve, I want to give some real numbers, right? You know, income, who is, what is the income that someone, this development would serve? We're good. Just, yeah, we're good, let's just leave it there. You know, incomes are up to $38,400, okay? The median income for someone who's retired in Harrison Township is $24,000. Okay? $38,400 is what we would serve up to, okay? So someone who is actually in the median, right, of incomes in Harrison Township can only afford about $660 a month in rent, okay? So, and when we look around the area, okay, there, you know, in a 20-mile radius, the average price for independent living is 32, a unit, is 3,200 bucks, okay? So when we, and so when we look at this development, we look particularly here in Harrison Township, right? When you look at the two dedicated affordable housing developments here in Harrison Township, they charge about $1,000, and there's zero units typically available in those properties. So for our seniors who otherwise are trying to stay here and cannot otherwise afford to live here, there's not an option. And we want to be able to provide an option for people who are living here. All right. So when we think about this, right, and who's going to be responsible for making sure that this property is maintained, make sure that the people that are living in there are qualified to live in there, make sure that, you know, it works well in the community, that's CHN, and we have a proven track record of that. You know, and how do we, how do we do this? We build these great buildings, but then you need to manage them, you need to maintain them. And that's what we do really good. I'll tell you a little bit of how we do that. You know, we have an onsite property manager, right? So a person's onsite, right? This isn't like, we build this building and we go away and runs amok. There's an onsite property manager, right? That property manager has responsibility for the building, for making sure that it's leased up, making sure that people who live there are in compliance with, you know, the rules and qualify, and to supervise other staff. We have onsite maintenance and custodian to make sure that the property stays clean and it stays well-maintained. We have different events for the residents, right? We have health fairs and, you know, things like that. And then there's continued oversight from our overall property management team and their managers. And when we're leasing up properties like this one, we're very focused on serving the community that we have the property in, right? So, you know, what, we have a heavy focus on that, right? We work with senior centers, we work with churches, we work with neighborhood groups to ensure that, you know, people who live in Harrison Township have that first option to be able to live in this property if they otherwise, you know, qualify for it. So, you know, I wanted to give you that overall, that overview, because I thought it was important to kind of talk through that and make sure that you kind of appreciated the kind of perspective that we have and the approach we have to doing the sort of development and the experience we have doing. So I'll hand it back over to Eric to give him one more detail.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Adam, you could go down a couple slides. So you touched upon Maple Park Place, so just give an example of, go up, actually, too much associated photos of these developments. Go up one more. So similar in architecture, and also a project that I think CHN Housing Partners is quite happy with. It's a 48-year deal, 30% to 40% AMI with senior affordable in Cleveland, quite comparable to what we're proposing here. Next slide, please. And this is what the building, obviously, this was delivered maybe six, seven years ago. This is what it looks like today. And so really well-maintained, beautiful lobby, beautiful media room, similar to what would be built at this location as well. Next slide, please. Next slide. Kevin went through this, you all have seen this slide previously. Next slide, please. You've also seen this as it relates to the degree of demand for senior housing. Kevin went through this, and we're focusing on a HEPA, went to a HEPA a couple of weeks ago, also very well-maintained on the interiors, talked to a few management staff about compliance, about overall maintenance, talked to a few residents. It's a wonderful building, and it's very well-maintained from the exterior and interior. Next slide, please. Project overview, we've gone through this, but I'll just do this quickly, a reminder. We're proposing a 74-unit deal on Ballard Street, 26755 Ballard. It is a $20 million investment into this community, serving between 30% to 60% of AMI, that's $18,000 to $38,000 a year in income, trying to utilize a 9% low-income housing tax credit program. As we've talked about before, it is required that we have the rezoning in place and site plan approval prior to the submission of the tax credits on October 3rd, and that's why we're here today, is to try to obtain that approval. Obviously, we're rezoning to a PUD, and as I just said, trying to obtain site plan approval. Next slide, please. We, this is, I, this is the site plan, Blake is going to talk a little bit about some of the changes related to open space within the building to address Adam's comments from last meeting, but we all know, as Adam said, we're trying to rezone from RM1. That would allow approximately 40 units to PUD for the 74 units. A portico chair, there's a dog park, there's a courtyard within, and some amenities with respect to the garden there as well. We have made some modifications to the overall building aesthetics that Adam will talk, or not Adam, that Blake will talk about in just a second. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Blake to talk about the deviations in the overall architecture and the changes that were made.
Good evening. My name is Blake Hatterman. I had the privilege of being the project designer on this project. I represent Fusco Schaefer and Pappas Architects in Burn Dale. We specialize in this type of project in affordable housing. And I've worked on a number of projects over the years that are very similar to this one, in fact.
Excuse me, Mr. Kevin. Can I ask you to please project, since we don't have microphones?
Sure, I will try to do that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, thank you.
During my tenure at Fusco Schaefer and Pappas, there have been very few projects that deviate from the metrics that we are looking at right now, especially for the senior developments. They all tend to be around the same size in character as what you're seeing tonight. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time going through the deviations. I'd like to point out a couple of items that have changed, that make the project better. We've had the opportunity to do a couple of different iterations based on the comments and feedback that we've received from the commission and public comment. The first deviation I'd like to discuss is the minimum of 40 acres for a PUD development. Our site is 5.2 acres. I'd like to reserve comment on this for discussion later in our presentation by Mr. Toomey. The next couple of deviations regarding the height, the building length, and the density requirements are all sort of entwined in building related in themselves. So if we deviate or try to change one, it will exacerbate another one. So we are working with a deviation for six feet in the maximum building height. That is in regard to the building being three stories, and the building having a sloped roof on top of that. We did do some design iterations that allowed us to fall within the maximum height requirement, but due to public comment, and we feel actually also that the aesthetics with a sloped roof will improve the project and make it more contextually appropriate for the surrounding area. We are asking for six feet in deviation, excuse me, for the height. The design that we did that was within the ordinance, I'd like to point out, was a flat roof design, so we can, we can do that. We feel that it's a better solution to provide a sloped roof, which we'll see in the elevations in a moment. With regard to the maximum building length, we started off with a project that was 80 units. On the site design that we had, that building was 215 feet long on the longest side, there were sides that were shorter than that. Our deviation we're asking for is 41 feet. So that's in reducing the amount of units and reducing the density on the site, we were able to reduce the size of the building slightly, but we are still asking for a deviation of 41 feet. Partially, in, as I mentioned before, these senior projects tend to not work unless we have a certain unit count. And I can't tell you of a single project that's been different since I've worked at Fusco Schaefer and Pappas than what you're seeing tonight. We did, I'll go to the end deviation, the density, because we did take the development from 80 units down to 74 units. So we were able to take each of the wings of the building that projected north on the site and reduce a stack of units from each of those. We were still able to maintain the same unit mix with one and two-bedroom units, but we were able to reduce the unit count slightly. The minimum landscape setback in screening, we are still asking for a 15-foot deviation regarding the rear landscape setback. We did do a number of iterations on the site and have landed on a solution that both increases the open area on the site, which we were close to, we were slightly over, but we've improved that on our new design. But also eliminated a portion of the ring road that we had before. There's still adequate fire access around the building. We will have to go through some iterations with the fire marshal regarding that, regarding that, the safety issue, and how much road they want to see, and how much access they do need, but we do meet the criteria for that as well. And then we are asking for a landscape buffer in lieu of a berm. A landscape berm creates some other issues on the site regarding drainage and so forth. So we think that we can, we can achieve the ordinance requirements, design intent, by doing a landscape buffer in lieu of that berm, without creating any hazards to the properties that are adjacent to our own. If we can move to the next slide, I believe, or the exterior elevation. This slide shows you the iterations that we've gone through on the exterior elevations. The elevation on the bottom is what we started with. The elevation on the top is the elevation that we've, the most current elevation. The middle elevation shows the flat roof scheme that doesn't deviate from the height. However, we do feel that the elevation on the top, the current elevation, is greatly improved in terms of the aesthetic, and it was actually a nice opportunity to look at this several times to come to an aesthetically beautiful building. The use of materials in stone and lap siding, and some shingle siding in some key areas on the tower elements, I'll bring our design back into the, into the realm of responding to the nautical theme without being nautical in quotation marks, like would be gaudy. We think that applying a coastal design to the aesthetic of the building was more appropriate in this, and we will enhance that with some nautical elements in terms of the building details, the lighting, the way that the exterior materials are applied, and some banding in some key areas that will bring that back into the, into the building. And then taking that and then wrapping that all four sides, so you won't just have a one-sided design, you'll have a building that's consistent all the way around. We're looking at using materials that are durable and lower maintenance in terms of vinyl or composite siding, a stone band that wraps all the way around the building and is brought up in a couple of key areas, on the towers and the side, and on a couple of the other columns and things like that on the portico chair, but bringing those details that we think relate to a coastal or nautical architecture back into the, into the design, enhancing it greatly from what you first saw. So there's been some iterations that we've done. We feel the project is going to be a beautiful, durable, excellent project that's contextual with the surrounding neighborhoods. I believe that the next slide probably has a couple of the other elevations that you can see as wrap that design theme and those materials around all four sides of the building. I will reserve myself to answer any further questions that the commission has, but I'll turn the presentation back over to Mr. Toomey at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Adam, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you so much. I'll have seen this slide, so I'll, you know, the idea of the PUD is that we're providing a certain degree of public benefit, and so we've gone through these previously. I'll quickly go through these benefits. Obviously, housing demand. Kevin touched upon the need for senior housing, whether it's in Harrison Township, Southeast Michigan, Michigan and the nation for that matter, we've talked about that. We've talked about job creation. A $20 million investment, we estimate will create approximately 210 short-term jobs, and there will be six full-time permanent positions going through the, how the buildings are maintained and onsite full-time individuals, there'll be six of those. We've talked about the infrastructure improvements and the redundant system on several occasions. We've talked about recreational amenities and the partnership with the Tucker Senior Center. So just as Kevin described in CHN's world of partnering with senior centers, we've met with the Tucker Senior Center. We've also talked to the Road Commission as Ms. O'Parka asked us to do so, seeing if the possibility of providing the sidewalk on the northern side of Ballard Street and then connecting it to the Tucker Senior Center through a crosswalk was feasible. Conceptually speaking, it is absolutely doable. It would have to go through the appropriate approvals and the appropriate reviews within the Road Commission, but it's something that can be done. In addition to that, the span that fronts the parcel of improving that with a paved road is also possible as well. So wanted to bring that to your attention. In addition to that, we, if approved, the partnership with Tucker Senior Center would allow for additional classes with respect to financial literacy, a annual donation from the project and development team to the Tucker Senior Center, as well as the possibility of purchasing a bus for our project, or on behalf of the Tucker Senior Center to address the critical need of transportation, additional transportation for seniors in the community. When we met with the Tucker Senior Center, that was the number-one need, is there just isn't enough transportation to service these seniors. So we would be willing to provide that for the project. We've talked about cognitive care, the idea that providing tenant services in the building and providing, providing health and wellness within a building, within one building, having that density allows for a more efficient and effective cognitive care for the aging population. And also blight and vacancy allocation. It is vacant land today, and I know many people view that as a positive on the block, but we believe that vacant land turning into productive use is a benefit, and also will stimulate the possibility of the hospital being developed by having a new development and increasing the value of that site, of the vacant site, allowing for new development at the hospital site. Next slide, please, Adam. Adam, one second before I go into that. So through the chairs, if I may ask Adam a question associated with planned unit developments?
Sure.
Okay, thank you so much. Adam, if you could, the question that I have is, the use of planned unit development, can you talk about it, not just specific to Harrison Township, but the use of planned unit developments, broadly speaking, and why as planners we have planned unit developments and zoning codes?
Yep, I can.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
So I think the planned unit development option is common. Most communities now have an option in their ordinance for that. It's spelled out in your zoning ordinance that, you know, talks about the intent of your planned unit development section, which is not unlike others, other communities, but really, it's intended to have, to allow for some degree of flexibility. Zoning ordinances by nature are black and white. You meet it, you don't meet it, it can be this high, it can't be this high, it has to be only these uses, it can't be these uses. But there often are reasons why flexibility is important. Maybe because of the uniqueness of the property, of the site, maybe natural characteristics of the land that could be maybe protected if you would not strictly follow the zoning ordinance setbacks or something like that. So often, planned unit developments provide flexibility in uses in terms of even mixing uses, maybe like, you know, residential, single-family residential with multi-family residential, and maybe even some, you know, commercial integrated into it. So it's all about flexibility. Typically, you know, in granting flexibility, you would want to see public benefit as part of that, and so that's spelled out in your ordinance as well, not unlike other communities where, you know, they need to demonstrate that they're providing something above and beyond what the conventionals or the underlying zoning district might provide. Maybe it's additional open space, maybe whatever it might be. So I think that's maybe an overview, so I...
That's great overview.
Thank you, Adam. So with the PUD and what we're asking for is that degree of flexibility. And so that's exactly what we're trying... exactly what we're trying to accomplish with the PUD. Obviously, today, it's zoned as RM1, which would allow for between thirty-eight to forty units. The site is five acres, and we do believe that we need the flexibility in order to make this a financially viable project to have that flexibility for a seventy-four unit development. So, with that, I wanted to talk about the future land use plan. We've talked about it before, but this comes directly from the waterfront redevelopment plan in 2015. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up is, on that slide that says planned redevelopment, the former St. John's Hospital has the potential to be redeveloped for several uses, which may include residential, single-family, multiple-family, and senior housing or care facilities, boutique hotel, office, restaurant, excluding drive-through, blah, blah. So, the plan that you guys embarked upon that took into account a pretty robust, from what I read, charrette process and sort of public engagement process, called this site out for redevelopment for senior housing. And in addition to the left, you can see that the future land use map shows planned redevelopment, which is the PUD. So, we're following the future land use map both in use and in the call for rezoning into planned unit development. Next slide, please. Secondarily, the site that you see here, this is in the plan. So, some planner or some architecture firm came through and drew conceptual plans and recommendations. What you can see in black right there, which is the layout of that building that's on our site, is quite similar to the layout that we have provided for our site plan. And in that red that's right there says repurpose and expand former hospital site, potential for mixed-use residential, senior housing. So, again, our design is comparable to what was provided in the recommendations within the waterfront redevelopment plan. The zoning that we're asking for, the rezoning, is directly in line with what was planned in 2015. And third, the use is in line with exactly what was stated in the waterfront redevelopment plan. Next slide, please. In addition to that, the waterfront redevelopment plan offers up several different recommendations. On the left, you see directly from that plan, you see the zoning ordinance amendments. And you actually in 2017 did do that, the planning commission. You rezoned Jefferson to V1A, which is exactly called for for mixed-use development. But to date, it hasn't, this site has not been rezoned to planned development. We hear today could be that impetus for that future land use, which is called out in your future land use plan. In addition to that, as a recommendation for that rezoning, it says other zoning ordinance amendments, the last sentence there, amendments should be explored in order to implement this plan, such as the creation of an expedited review process to stimulate new development and the allowance for performance bonuses, i.e. density bonuses. For new development as an incentive to provide public benefits such as dedication of public open space. And then on top of that, when you went back to the community and said, of all of the various recommendations in that page right there from the waterfront redevelopment plan, the zoning amendment scored the highest. So, you did that. You rezoned the Jefferson Avenue, and now we're here trying to get this rezoning to allow for the density and the rezoning into PUD for senior housing. Next slide, please. In addition to that, after the waterfront redevelopment plan was enacted, so this is enacted, it is a plan, that the DDA was established as a result of this. The DDA covers the area that's in left right there, that covers the site that we're talking about today. I'm not going to read everything in the plan that's on the right, but in the DDA TIF plan on page fourteen, that was also enacted that created your DDA. Harrison Township zoning regulations and other land development codes must support and encourage the type of character and development conceived by the waterfront plan and the development plan. Various amendments to the Harrison Township zoning ordinance, ordinance number three oh six, may be needed in order to effectuate the change recommended in the waterfront redevelopment plan. So, not only is it in the waterfront redevelopment plan, but subsequently, it's in the DDA TIF plan that established the DDA to effectuate what is in the waterfront redevelopment plan. Next slide, please. And lastly, there's been a lot of talk about the forty-acre requirement to waive the forty-acre requirement for the PUD in your existing ordinance. To date, you have one, two, three, four, five, six different PUDs at your disposal. Okay, two of which, one was most recently, the waiver was approved. I feel that the PUD is still in review and consideration. You have our project in front of you that's in consideration, and then you have another PUD that is just on the other side of Clinton River spillway, that's one hundred and twenty-three acres. Out of all of those PUDs, only one satisfies the forty-acre requirement. And just quickly, and I don't want to belabor this, but if you look at Harrison Township and the amount of developable land in Harrison Township today that is forty acres, there is not a single piece of developable land that is forty acres. There is one piece that's over a hundred acres, but it's in a flood plain, and so it's not developable. So, the waterfront redevelopment plan, along with the PUD and the purpose of a PUD to create flexibility, directly aligns with exactly what we are proposing. And I think that ends the, and we thank you for your time and look forward to subsequent discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. To those of you standing in the back, there are six chairs right up front if you would like to have a seat. Please feel free. And again, I'm going to remind those that came in after we started, please mute your cell phones. So, Mr. Toomey, did you want to specifically address the two, I think there are two changes that we specifically asked for?
The two changes that you specifically asked for were related to open space, I believe, and the pitched roof, and so those two specific changes were addressed. We went from, I think, what was calculated, I think it was twenty-four point nine percent, we're now at twenty-seven percent, I think it's noted on the plans. And then in addition to that, there was discussion about the design and the pitched roof. We tried to make the modification associated with the flat roof to be in conformance with the current zoning code, but after comments from this board, we addressed the pitch roof. If there's anything else that you needed us to address, I can, we can discuss it between the whole team.
So, you said you increased it to twenty-eight percent?
Twenty-seven. Right, Blake?
Yeah, I think that's correct, yeah. We also changed the character of the space that we, excuse me. We also changed the character of the space that we used to make that calculation in reducing the amount of ring road and eliminating the previously counted parking islands. We're still within that twenty-seven percent. So, we did increase three percent, but we also made the space that we're counting, space better than it was before. So, I believe our submission had a diagram that can show you. If you needed to pull that up, and I can speak more.
Yeah, that would be great to get it up on my, I'm sorry.
The hatched area on this plan shows the area that we calculated as open. We excluded any paved surfaces. We did again remove the ring road on the left side of this drawing, and we did exclude any detention areas and landscape setbacks and so forth from that calculation. So, in addition to what's calculated, there actually is a great deal more space that's open and would remain so on the site. Are there any further questions about how we calculated that?
Not at this time. Thank you. Mr. Toomey, you mentioned that you additionally had some discussion with the Macomb County Commission of Roads?
Yep. Yeah, we spoke to John Abraham. Between the civil engineer, Giffords Webster, myself, and we spoke to John Abraham of the Macomb County Road Commission. It's not depicted on here, but what we discussed is the opportunity to take the sidewalk from the edge of our parcel all the way to past the hospital site, down a couple of blocks to where you hit Tucker Senior Center. If you could bring up Google Maps, I can show you what was specifically discussed. And then we have not specifically discussed the optimal location for a crosswalk, but the opportunity for a crosswalk with the appropriate signage to slow down for the pedestrian is acceptable based on more further review if this plan were to be accepted.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the gentleman that spoke tonight before we move on to allow the public?
Yeah, I wanted to give the fire marshal a chance to address his letter, which speaks to some of the changes.
Yep, we can, you want to do that now? We can do that now.
Thank you. Very good evening. So, as your letter states, I review this as a second plan. Couple of things that I noted, there's in your letter, the twenty-six feet is required by the fire code is not presented on the fire access lane. The FDC is not shown on the plans. I figure that was probably just an error in reprocessing because the water lines are there, so that's not huge a concern to me, but I had to note that that was on there. The last thing is the access road to the left of the screen up there has been removed, and the fire department cannot approve these plans without that road in there because we can't access that side of the building. The entrance on the west side was fixed from the last plan. There's a hydrant right there. The hydrant is basically useless to us because we can't go straight along the west side of the property. That whole west side is unprotected from us from the exterior. If there's an incident over there, we can't access it, as it currently stands.
And the applicant has a copy of the fire marshal's letter?
We do.
Yes, we do. Do you want to address it? Yes, we have a copy, Sabrina, provide it to me.
August twenty-fifth letter?
Oh, thank you. Yes, that's, yes, to declare that specifically.
It's the latest letter dated August twenty-fifth.
Yeah, let's check it out, as good as it to confirm that. So, the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three letter from you is the latest, right? Or has there been any updates for this?
No, I have not had any updates since then.
Okay, so that's the fire department's current?
Well, so that is the current letter, that it's not recommending approval until those corrections are made.
It says, we did receive, we did receive the letter, and we do understand that there's going to be some interaction that we have with the fire marshal to correct our plan to accommodate their needs. I don't believe that any of the corrections that are stated on the letter are going to have any further impact. It's just the next step of design that we need to go through to comply, and we will comply with all of the fire marshal's requests.
And so, removing that westernmost road that completes the circle, that was taken out to accommodate the open space, correct?
Yes, but we still have ample open space to accommodate the twenty-five percent.
Where?
I'd like to point out that in a number of designs that we've done in the past, we've used this similar configuration, and there is at least a hundred and fifty feet of hose length from the end of each of those accessible areas to accommodate an emergency that happens on the side of the building. So, that's just a matter of us meeting with the fire marshal and determining what they want to see, what the best design practice is, and then revising our plans accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Do you also have a copy of, excuse me, the, our engineer's letter dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, do we want to address, the site plan shows the two driveway approaches matching to the irregular edge of the existing gravel road. These drive approaches should be shown as matching on the new, on the new plan. I can't see if they are. The paving of Ballard should be shown on the plan as well, including the proposed pavement across, a pavement cross-section, the width of pavement and the extent of the pavement will go to the west.
As part of this project, we are planning on repaving Ballard, at least up to, I believe, the end of our site, which would include, that being shown in our plans, will include the regular drives as stated in the letter. We will comply with that as well. As a design team, we made a decision to comply with all of these, but not necessarily make the actual changes before we received our approvals.
Okay, so, so, all of the items on the engineer's letters, your, on the engineer's letter, you will comply with?
Absolutely, yes.
So, that talks about the water main as well? And just to get it on record, that's an indication that currently the water main is running under pavement and a curb, and the water main should be shifted to the west to reduce the amount of water under the pavement to the greatest extent possible.
Yeah. Mike, do you have anything to add to that?
No, that's, we would comply with that. Yes.
Commissioners, any points to the engineer's letter that you want to discuss? Okay. Let's move on to the, to the planner's letter. You have a copy of the planner's letter as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Do we want to, well, let me just put the blanket out there. You're saying that you're going to comply with all of the items that are mentioned. Does that include everything that's mentioned on the planner's letter as well?
Yes.
Everything? Mr. Young, was there anything specifically that you wanted to point out regarding your letter? I have some notes, but was there anything that you wanted to draw attention to specifically?
Not necessarily. A lot of the, the comments that I had on the bottom of page four and five, those are site plan comments, details, information that can easily, easily be incorporated onto the plan set. You know, things that I'm sure they're aware of and as they've indicated are able to be addressed. I'm glad to hear that. The, the one thought is with regard to the open space, we, you know, my, a prior comment from the prior meetings or prior letters was, you know, make sure that you're confirming the open space through that open space plan, which they provided. Their current one shows twenty-one, twenty-seven percent, complying with the twenty-five percent minimum. But they did, of course, use the elimination of that fire lane. Not saying that they can't get to twenty-five percent, but we don't have it in front of us to see it. So, the current plan in front of us shows twenty-seven percent, but it does include the open space gained from eliminating that fire lane, which is in question at this point. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you. And the one thing that, oh, sorry, please, go ahead.
Manager. And I guess I'm just looking for your thoughts on what I'm seeing as a little bit of a conflict in your letter and what I'm hearing. And that is on page three of your letter, you're talking about the Harrison Township master plan designated the subject site as a future single-family residential. And then we heard earlier, the vision in the master plan is for multi-family use, at least where the hospital is, which is a site right next door. And therein, the master plan, there is a discussion about the aging over the next twenty years, continue to see the population age. So, I'd like your views on the single-family resident, because we've heard a lot from the residents on, you know, Ballard Street versus the multi-unit down that street and the vision of Harrison Township.
So, the, there's the township-wide two thousand and ten land use plan.
Right.
That shows this particular site for single-family residential, future use. What they have cited correctly is a sub-area plan that was prepared later and adopted later in two thousand and fifteen. That's the waterfront redevelopment plan. This site was included in it, studied as part of it, and they've indicated, and they showed the maps from that plan showing that it's, that piece and the adjacent St. John's Hospital piece, the two of them together were shown in that planned redevelopment category and the language that was cited there. So, the two thousand and fifteen plan is, differs from the two thousand and ten master plan. But as part of a master planning process, it's common to have, you know, drill down to a particular area of the community. And so, I would say that the recommendations in the two thousand and fifteen plan are valid, and I don't see it as a conflict. I see it as a, you know, delving deeper into a particular area and providing more specificity and more in-depth study.
Okay, thank you.
Manager.
Yes, sir.
Can I expand a little bit on my?
Yes, you may.
Mind if I come up and point to?
No, please do.
Explain a little bit. So, where are we standing right now? Fire department connection is right here. So, in the event of a real-world fire, a truck is going to pull up in this area and connect to this fire department connection to supplement the sprinkler system of the building. What that's going to do?
Will they come on the side?
Yeah. They'll, here's the fire. Well, here's the fire department connection. In the real world, we're going to pull up, connect to the fire department connection, hydrant's right here. So with one access, with this road gone, this lane is pretty much tied up with operations. So if we have any kind of, any over here, over here, we're out of commission. This hydrant here, if this is tied up, it's going to go nowhere. We can't even access it. So this whole area will not be protected with that. So that's why we need this whole curb so we can access 360 of the building. Because if we have an incident over here on the roof, it's a sprinkled building, this is the best thing we can do. But if something happens over here, our apparatus can attack from this side as well. For best potential safety.
Correct, yeah.
That's the rationale of the whole circle.
Understood.
And this is going to create congestion. As it is, there could be congestion in here, just do this operation here. So we need another way to access.
And let me just ask a question while you're up there, please. If a fire truck were to come down that main, that main eastern road and say head down to the end to address perhaps a problem at the end of the building, is there enough room for that fire truck to maneuver itself back out again? Or are you forced to back out?
In this case, we'd be, we could probably turn in here and back out here. Could. But obviously, we don't want to, we want to do as little backing as possible. And in the fire code
Manager, may I address this gentleman?
In the fire code, fire code 30, 503 dot 1 dot 2 says the fire code officials authorized to require more than one fire apparatus access road based on the potential for impairment of a single road by vehicle congestion, conditions of terrain, climate conditions, or other factors that could limit access. So that's what I used to say.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cuttman, you wanted to address that?
Yes, I would like to just reiterate that we will comply with the fire marshal's requests and have the subsequent meetings necessary to do so and provide a solution, whether it be a road or some other potentially like a GeoMAD or something that supports an apparatus underneath of a lawn to keep that open. But those are discussions that we need to have and will have and adjust the plan accordingly.
Thank you. Mr. Shaked, anything additional?
Not at this time. I would need another site plan submitted before I can recommend any kind of approval, corrections.
And let me just ask this question then to the planner. Let me take it one step further. If a substrate were to be placed in, in place of a road, some sort of a, I don't know, multi-use, multi-function?
Permeable paper.
Yeah. It, does that, would that subtract from the open space percentage if that area was dedicated to open space until or unless it was needed for a particular event?
Yeah, I would say that you have flexibility. The ordinance doesn't, it doesn't specify what is or isn't open space. So it's going to be up to you whether you find it to be functional open space. I think that's the important part of it. If it's functional, if it serves a functional open space purpose, it can be used as open space. You would have the flexibility to allow that, yes. So I think, I think there's a, I think there could be a compromise. It could be pavers, it could be, you know, the GeoMAD. You'd want to see it, you'd want to, you know, give it some thought. But I think, I think there's an opportunity that it could be part of the open space requirement.
Thank you.
May I, may I ask a question about that? Specifically, can the approval through the chair to the planner, if, if were to be approved, this, this could be a condition upon approval. So this would something, it doesn't, that could become, come back as an administrative amendment or to be conditioned into the future?
That's really not a question for me, that's a, that's a question for you all.
So you're asking if, what, state that again for us?
So meaning that if, if, if it was approved, the approval would be conditioned upon providing this calculation and an alternate to ensure that 25% is met by us complying with the fire marshal code? An offering that we would comply with that, assuming that it was conditioned?
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Before you get to that, just on that, I mean, possibility of conditional approvals. And I'd like to direct this to the fire marshal. I thought, I heard a comment that you would not be comfortable with conditional approval unless you saw
I have to see the plans.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, I have to see the plans. I can't recommend my part of the approval unless I see a site plan that says it corrects the violations.
Ms. Young.
Yes, please.
Depending on what you decide to do, this is still just a recommendation to the township.
Correct.
Ultimately, the site plan will have to be approved as well. But that would be, anything like that too could also be incorporated into that development agreement. I may like take a note, everything that's a deviation is going into that agreement as well. So it'd have to get final approval from the fire department.
Thank you.
And then, excuse me, that, that can happen during full engineering plans, correct?
If that's how they want to approve it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there was one part of the planner's letter that I did want to talk about. And that was on page four, item number two. The topographic survey shows that there are two wetlands on the property. The smaller of the two wetlands located in the eastern portion of the site is proposed to be eliminated. A permit from Michigan Eagle may be required if this is a reg, if this is a regulated wetland. Have you done any investigation, performed any, contacted anyone, obtained any clarification regarding?
We have ASDI Environmental conducted a wetland, ASDI Environmental conducted a wetland survey on the site. The site does, to your point, have a .05 acre wetland right where the Cortica share is. It is unregulated. In addition to that, the, the site that you're describing, the area above, is not on our parcel. It's on the, it's the other parcel, the 18 acres is above, so it's not on our land. So we do intend to mitigate that, that .05. We have contacted Eagle to have those discussions. If awarded the tax credit and approved here, we will go through the process that is required with Eagle. But currently, those wetlands are unregulated and we would be happy to provide you with the wetland survey that was conducted on the site.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, did you want to address anything listed in Mr. Young's letter? Excuse me, may I ask you to take your conversation outside, please? Okay. At this time, why don't we go ahead, well, does the board have any questions? Let's, let's start here. Anything that you want to ask any of the gentlemen? Any clarification from our professionals? Before we open back, before we continue with the public hearing? Wow, okay, all right. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and allow the public hearing portion to continue. Again, I would like to remind you, the last time this applicant was before us, there was a great deal of conversation and comment, and we have all of those notes. So I'm asking you to not reiterate. So let's just address the, the new items discussed this evening. You each will have three minutes and I will set a timer. I'm asking you to please stay within that three minutes or, I don't want to have to, I don't want to have to cut anybody off. So with that, want to go ahead? Would you like to come up and please tell us your, your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Jason Wright. I live at 27160 Campo Lane. I have several questions I'd like to have answered tonight. First of all, do you plan on taking soil samples to see the toxicity since it was illegally dumped? Has anybody thought about that? It was an illegal dump, filled in illegally. We all know that, everybody on that street knows it. Have you guys taken any toxic samples for that? Okay, and obviously, nobody can tell me, so. To the engineers, have you done any surveys on the possible damage to the roads from the heavy trucks and the equipment moving in and out? You're the
You have to address your comments to us, please.
Okay, well, any of the engineers?
What we're going to do is take all the information down and then we will address at the end.
Okay, because this is an important thing. Because there's trucks that have gone through there, taken out the power lines on several occasions. If you go to the end of Campo Road, just at Jefferson, it's, there's a sinkhole right there. Now, if anybody knows about Ballard and Campo, you can't fit two cars going down the same way. You can't. So these trucks come in, they're going to have to go all the way around down to Campo. Our sewer systems run back and forth. I don't understand what's going to happen if these 137,000 pound trucks decide to come down Campo and then come around to the backside of us. Okay, same thing with a fire truck. You can only get one fire truck down there, you can't go side by side. Okay, I mean, we got to think about this. This is going to impact us, the residents. If I get a sinkhole in front of my house or one of my power lines, who's going to be liable for that? The county. Who's going to be liable because you guys allowed this? I mean, it's common sense, okay? To common sale, what's the oldest senior center that you still have operational from the time you built it?
Please address.
Okay, well, this is for this gentleman here. I just, I want to get some basic questions so the people know. What's the oldest building that you still own?
We'll take your questions and then we're going to answer all of that at the end.
All right. What's the oldest building that they still own that's still operational? Okay? That's a, that's a question in part because they have a 45-year tax-free. My question is, they make, where do they make the profits off of that? Since it's nonprofit, they lease it to help the welfare and everything else. It's not going to the community, might be going into their pockets. Okay? How do you make that money back up in their corporations? I mean, it's not feasible to anybody except to them. We don't see any benefits as residents. Are the rates supposed to be locked in for that 45 years at a certain rate? I mean, one guy said 600 and something dollars this time. And last time in one of his presentations, he stated over $800.
I'm sorry, your time is up?
You can have more time.
All right. So, and then what happens if it falls down below the guidelines? Are they going to end up selling it and turning it around?
Hold on, hold on one second, please. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, we, I, I know we did that last time where we, we let a second person come up and continue. But I think what I would like to do is let everybody have an opportunity for their, for their three minutes first. And let's see if, if some of the items that you want to continue to
Well, then, I, I just, before I leave, I thank you for your little bit of time. Do you guys, have you guys contacted the Army Corps of Engineers or the EPA?
Your three minutes are
I understand, I just wanted you here. Did any of you contact the EPA or the Army Corps of Engineers? Who are the ones that regulate the wetlands?
Shannon Riley O'Neil, 26129 Ballard. First of all, I have two and a half acres on that street, so I'm thinking I can get 37 units. Sorry. I said I could get 37 units on my two and a half acres, that means. Okay. Kevin said that Harrison Township people had the first option to the property, that they could get in there first when he presented today. But I remember from last time, they said that they couldn't give that to Harrison Township people first. So that's a question, is that true or not true? Second thing is, the variance of 41 feet too long. When you think about it, that means it's 20 feet closer to the lady's house next door, which is from here to that wall closer. So that's, that's a huge distance. That's right on top of you. So just keep in mind who's sitting over there. 40 feet doesn't sound like anything when it's 300 feet wide or I can't even read it, so I don't know what this is. It's a lot closer to her house. When you're getting rid of the berm, I have a berm at my house. The berm does block some of the light to the neighbors. When I pull out of the driveway, I don't shoot light into their house, I shoot it into the berm. So without the berm, the trees will block it, but the berm is permanent. It's not going to burn down, it's not going to get hit by a storm. So I think that berm is really important to have there. I still don't see any benefit to Harrison Township residents. I see it to the general public, yeah. But I don't, I still think that the roads aren't going to handle that. And single-family units, I have two children that have just bought homes and they couldn't get anything in Harrison Township. They wanted to live on my street. So that's viable, I don't think we have to have a senior place. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Scott Duquino, I live at 27215 Ballard. First thing I'd like to address is that they mentioned something about putting yield signs so people slow down. I'm the second house off Jefferson. People turn that corner, they punch it daily, all hours of the day and night. I hear the cars, the muscle cars, the wannabe muscle cars, doing it daily. Second off, if you remember, I think it was 2007 or 2006, there was a fire on the other side of the spillway. It took over an hour for the fire department to get the water pressure they needed to put that fire out. That burnt, that building burnt to the ground. It's no longer there. So you want to put something like this there, you're talking about how the water supply is. How is this going to help anybody? Even that, that was a 12-unit building that was completely destroyed from a fire that started on the roof. This is a 74-unit building, it's going to tower over every house in subdivision. This is a subdivision. It's not just a local street. If they wanted to put this next to Luigi's on Jefferson, that's a huge piece of property. I can understand something like that. When I built my garage last year, I was told I can't go over 35% of the property on my building. Or concrete. This looks like it's going to cover more than 35% of the land.
So this evening, so I'm just going to remind you all, a lot of what's already been discussed was discussed at the last public hearing. And, and we, we have a lot of those comments. They weren't addressed.
Some of us might not have been at the last meeting.
Or hear the adjuration of them. Concerns are
You know, I, we don't know what was discussed at the last meeting, we might not have been there.
I, I can tell you that this evening, during this public hearing, we're going, we would like to stick to the, the two changes
The concerns of your citizens, of your residents?
Excuse me?
Is that what you want to stick to?
No, excuse me, please, please. We're going to stick to the two items, the two changed items, which are the open space and I believe the parking change, the, the open space calculation minus the road. And the second item Yeah, the roof, the pitch on the roof is returned, so we're looking at, we're looking at a six-foot, we're looking at a six-foot deficiency versus a flat roof.
Without due respect, he stood up stating that residents of Harrison Township are, you know, they'll have to move out. We've challenged him many times on that, that's false.
I understand your passion, but please, we are trying to follow our rules and regulations. Please.
He never honestly answered it. That's what we're having a problem with.
Please sit down, please sit down and bring your questions forward to address the changes.
We're trying to.
All right, let's, let's continue, please.
Hi, my name's Matt Babcock, I live at 266
I live at 26640 Ballard Street, which is across from the proposed development. I'm gonna talk about two things tonight. One is a little related to something I mentioned the last time I spoke. One is related to something Mr. Toomey brought up today, and that's about the waterfront redevelopment plan, which he says it directly aligns with. And we know that it does not directly align with, because in the waterfront redevelopment plan, it zones that section as RM1, which would be 38 units. And I think if he was to make this a 38-unit senior center, this would go away. We wouldn't, he wouldn't have to have these public hearings. If he just built it and moved 38 seniors, low income or not, and it would be done. So, I don't understand why he's trying to fool us into thinking that it directly, you know, aligns with the waterfront redevelopment plan, because it doesn't. The second thing I'd like to bring about is something I did talk about briefly last time, but I've had more time to do some research, and it's about the tax implications of this. Mr. Toomey spoke at a special meeting from, with the board, that this is gonna bring about $26,000 in tax revenue for our township annually, and I'd like to point out that I surveyed about 15 homes that are directly around the development for what they currently average in their tax payment, and it's $3,200 per home. If we look at the three stub streets that we have, the dead ends, Marilac, Homeview, and Edmund, they each contain 13 to 14 homes on them, considering the houses on the corner of Ballard as well. And if you were to take that amount and multiply it out, you know, based on the current tax rate of, of the average home in the area, that's $40,000. I don't know why we would be happy with $26,000 when we could potentially get 40, which would also satisfy all of your residents' concerns. You know, that's my point. I'm opposed to this project in the scale and scope that he's currently, you know, trying to tell us that it fits this waterfront redevelopment plan, because it does not. And secondly, we as a township could use more benefit from more homes that are single-family that would satisfy our residents, but also bring in more revenue for our town, which could further develop our DDA and our waterfront redevelopment. And I don't know why we would wanna choose less money when we could get more.
Linda Cartesque, I live on Marilac. At the first meeting, we were told by this board that there would be answered by the people who wanna build this, or by the board, all the questions that was asked. This is the third meeting. At this time, we still have not got the answer to all the questions we asked at the last two meetings. We are a single-family neighborhood. What you want to build belongs on 16 Mile Road and Jefferson. There's a nice property right there on Prentice. There's a nice big property where there are other condos there. We have enough trouble in our neighborhood with the water and sewer as it is. We cannot get the road commission or the sewer department to agree who's gonna help us. We have asked for years for the drains to be cleaned, to get the water to flow the right way. At this time, we can't even get the township to clean the weeds in a ditch along Ballard. You had Campo Lane paved a number of years ago. You tried getting one of your trucks going down that road, or Campo, or Ballard, one of the dump trucks, just take a dump truck. You know how wide that is? Then try to get a bus, which we come out of the senior center, put them on the same street. It's hard. I drive that bus. I know. This is not a neighborhood for this kind of building. It belongs someplace else.
My name is Barry Walsh. I also live on Marilac. What hasn't really been addressed, you know, I said not to reiterate something, is the traffic. I don't know about any of you, but if there's like a minor accident on the freeway, that makes that stretch of Jefferson almost impassable.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it, it could take you anywhere from 20 minutes to 25 minutes to get from shook to crocked. Now, we're gonna have the bulk launch. That's additional traffic. And on my way here, I also saw that there's proposed condos at Jefferson and Lance Cruz. Is that correct? That's more traffic. This is not sustainable. This is not the right area for this project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Donnie Strobeck. I live at 26660 Ballard Street. I mean, once again, I'm opposed to this. One thing every single one of you said at the last meeting was he needs to come back with less units, and nobody touched on that today. It's the same exact units, and they actually made the building bigger again. So, I just, he's just putting you guys through the wringer, so I'm opposed to it, and that's all I got to say.
Good evening. My name is Paula Bruett, and I'm a Harrison Township resident. I just have a few questions.
Could you state your address, please?
38154 Willemere. Who will provide the subsidies? MISTDA, HUD, Section 8? I'm kinda leaning that way because he has CHN here. Last time Eric was in front of the board, he was requested to explain what Section 8 is. He only explained one type of Section 8 program. I would like him to explain all four. Everything I brought about PUD refers to townhouses, homes, or condos. What are these? Apartments? Units? That's all. Thank you.
My name is Claire Backler, 2638 Old Beamer, three streets over from this. And I am against it, number one. I have been around the block more than once. I can remember when they tried to approve Metro Towers. It was going to be a senior high-rise. Guess what? They couldn't rent it out, so they changed it to Section 8. Is that gonna happen here too? Are they gonna turn this into a Section 8 if they don't? Wham!
I'm Mario Meraldo. I live at 25999 Ballard. My property, like Shannon's property, is about two and a third acres. Okay? My wife and my three children were raised on that, in a 2,000-square-foot house. I tried to get an extension on my garage 30 years ago, and it was an experience like crawling over broken glass. I was denied, I was ridiculed, whatever. I eventually had to have an encumbrance put on my property to get only a portion of the extension on my garage put on. It just appears to me that the township does not wanna do anything for the residents, but they are gonna bend over backwards for any business entity that comes into the township and wants a favor, wants to throw the rules out into the lake, because we're gonna do you a favor. You're not doing me no favor on my street. And I just want to add, maybe I'm one of those NIMBYs, not in my backyard, but not in my backyard. I don't want it there. Take it someplace else, okay? There's other places. Kunk Township, Mount Flemmons. Go over here, go someplace else. Don't put it on my street.
Good evening, Board. Randy LaBourne. I live on Pine Race, in the center of the township. But I am definitely against this. Grown up here, for generations of our families here. I'm gonna touch on something connected to what the fire marshal said, because he touched on safety, health, welfare, which is kinda generally what my question is. As you know, Monday night, we had a storm. A lot of this township power was out for a couple days or more, and this happens quite often around here. Now, I wanna know why there isn't an ordinance, or maybe you should consider it, or ask this gentleman if this goes through to put it in, that there isn't a building generator? Because if he cares so much about seniors, a lot of seniors use walkers, are on oxygen, or are in wheelchairs. They can't maneuver stairs. They can't count on the fire department or the police, because they're busy with downwires, trees, fires, accidents, and so on. So, this to me is a concern for, besides that, in the winter, they could be up freezing, and in the summer, get dehydrated. Or fall, trying to get their little doggies outside. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. But I think that is something you think about. My other thing is, when you talked about the parking, I noticed there's no carports there again. If they care so much about seniors, how are these people gonna slosh through in-between cars, try and clean their cars off if they're using a walker? You can still drive using a walker, I've done it. Or pushing a wheelchair to get your husband or whatever into the car? This is dangerous. They could fall and just lay there. And I, Happa has all kinds of carports, so I just don't understand. Even just trying to clean their car off, holding on to a walker and using a brush to try and clear it off, they could catch pneumonia. So, that would at least give some protection. And that's it.
Hi, I'm Colleen Renaquini. I live at 37892 Terramar Street. So, I don't live in the neighborhood, but I've been in the neighborhood for many years. I've seen the neighborhood for a long time. It's a beautiful neighborhood, lots of wildlife on the street. I know, what, 30 years ago, that property was filled in, illegally dumped on. I watched it happen. My sister lives on the street. I moved to Harrison Township 11 years ago, because it's a beautiful community, and I loved it. I felt like I moved home. I lived in St. Clair for 21 years. Never felt like home. Came here, it's home to me. We don't need, I've talked to my neighbors in my street, they're concerned about Section 8 moving in. We like to go to Kroger's. I don't always feel safe going to our Kroger's. It's always questionable. I try to go before dark. I try to be in and out of the parking lot quickly. The parking there is atrocious. We all know that. So, we're all concerned about having more Section 8 in the community. I know that they've tried to put stuff over by St. Hubert's, and that's always fallen through, because of, we don't want these big apartments. We want community. We want housing. We want neighbors. We don't want someone that moves in, stays for a while, and leaves. I love Harrison Township. I moved here because I want to be here. And bringing in apartments is just bringing in more community that doesn't love the town, doesn't love their neighbors. My neighbors, I love them. I help them. I plow them out all winter, because I wanna be part of the community. Apartments, you come and go. You're in and out. It's not home. Let's keep Harrison Township home.
I live on 39190 Clearview Street. I am opposed to this. I, you'll have to forgive me if I mention some things from before, I haven't been to any previous meetings, but I, earlier, they mentioned about water mains and pipes, but I was mainly concerned about flooding, because a lot of the township does flood, and I know that this area is going to be flooded, and I would like to know how they are going to manage that, how this building will handle the flooding and consistent wetness, and how they will keep that wetness off of the roads enough for it to be safe for the elderly to be mobile through their own areas, and how this will impact driving on those areas, and where that water will then go. I would also, they also mentioned the wetlands, and basically, we're saying whether or not those wetlands were important enough to keep, is what I was getting from that. And my question is, is which wetlands in Harrison Township are important enough to be saved? Which ones are important enough not to be plowed out? And I would like to know where those animals will go, because from what I've noticed in my driving down Parkway, is that I find it more often than not that there's dead animals on the side of the road, and I do not like to see that. I do not like to experience it, and it's unsightly. I don't like seeing rotting deer carcasses, and frankly, having somebody just wheel them out every now and then isn't enough for me. They need somewhere to go to. So, I would like to see that. And I know that there's also a lot of bats in Harrison Township, and that those bats take refuge in these woods, so I'm also concerned about them and where their habitat is going to then be. And essentially, yeah, I think that's all that I would like to say, is how they will be conscious about the environment that they are destroying.
I'm Jodi McCarthy. I live on Marilac also, and I bought the house there about five years ago, and it has been absolutely a nightmare. The amount of flooding, I have, like, front property now. My, front of my property probably sank probably two inches below the driveway of my neighbor. When I call the township about who's responsible, or how do we figure out where, they don't know who's responsible across the street on Ballard, on this side of Ballard, it's just, it's just back and forth all the time. Last year, when we had that bad storm, and we had all the flooding, yes, it will happen. We're in that kinda area. How, they're talking about water mains. I'd like to know more of the drainage and how it will be fixed, because that will, that'll just be a nightmare.
My name is Thomas Arnold. I live 26135 Ballard. First and foremost, I'm just gonna say I am opposed to this. Secondly, and I'm sure you guys have realized this as well, this gentleman, these gentlemen have come back multiple times with different plans, each time changing their design not to suit what you have asked for, but slightly to do what you have asked for, but more to what has benefited them. And every time you ask them for a response, they give you, "We'll fix it next." How many fixes does it take?
Jim Senstock, 31698 C&amp;W. I'm sure everybody can hear me. I'm gonna comment tonight on, on my concern that I want the planning commission to deny this and send it to the board with a denial. And I'm gonna talk about issues that I haven't talked about before, and I've really not heard many other people there talk about specifics. I'm gonna talk about the planning issues and why this shouldn't happen. The Plan Unit Development Section 1733 was intended, the purpose was to, intended to provide a greater degree of flexibility, as your planner said, in regulation of land development, and to take advantage of special characteristics of the land that would not be possible under strict enforcement of the ordinance. This proposal does none of that. Nothing. Specifically, the purpose requires innovation in land use and variety in design, layout, and type of, of, of structure. It requires, the second requirement, it requires that they preserve significant natural resources... It requires, the second requirement, it requires that they preserve significant natural resources. And of course, you've heard already today that the site was filled illegally and there hasn't been anything said about that whatsoever. But you know what? You're going to reward them for illegally filling it? It also requires the preservation of, and the word in the ordinance is useful open space. You tell me how that little thing in the middle there is useful open space? Give me a break. Open space as defined in this ordinance is opened so that people can walk around, can walk on the grass, can walk... What are they going to do in the middle there? Sit on a picnic table, maybe? That ain't useful open space. Section 4 of the ordinance requires that a proposal in a residential zone should be 40 acres, not 5.2. It addressed that. And they said, "Oh, what about all these others?" Well, the fact is that they mentioned one in there that's currently in front of the planning commission. That hasn't been approved yet. But it says your, the determination criteria for determining if it's, whether or not you can waive that is that it is located at an intersection of two roads or is surrounded by the majority of the perimeter by transitional uses such as, such as, public roads, utilities, and other things. Well, I'm the last one. If somebody would volunteer because I have some other... I guess you changed the rules from last time. And you know what? You just said that somebody could come up and talk, somebody else wants to come up and they said I could have it. So I'm asking to outline these things.
Somebody stand up and say address and then let them continue speaking.
No, you told them he could come back. It's what you told them, Carol.
If he could come back to possibly address another issue that hadn't been brought up.
Well, I've got some other issues here that you guys, these guys have talked about that aren't addressed.
Are there any other... Just hold that by. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak for three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
You want to come up and speak for three minutes? Okay, Mr. Sensack, take a side seat, please.
Don't give up, Mr. Sensack. Get back up there.
My name is Catherine Whitney. 26580 Ballard Street. I'm next door neighbor to Matt Babcock across the street from their plant development. They talked today about some changes that they wanted to make to cover some of your concerns. But the main issue is for us is the density thing. 38 units is okay. That was part of the water development plan. That might be okay, but 74 units is not okay. That has not changed. That's too much density. I would like to say that I'm not just concerned about this. In the minute last time we said for June 20th, they said I was concerned. I'm opposed. Please say I'm opposed, not just concerned. People here are opposed. We set our position, expressing our opposition to this. Not just our concern. Please make that point known. I think I'm pretty much done. Thank you.
Let's make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak first. Would you like to come up? Please do.
I'm Commissioner Barbara Zinner for the township. My address is 38400 Elmite, Harrison Township, just around the corner. I've heard about these meetings a couple times and I've heard some of the things that were going on.
Can I ask you to speak up because the microphones are not working?
I'm sorry. I'll speak into it better.
There is no mic. It's not working.
All right, I'll try to yell. My voice is annoying.
I'd give her another 30 seconds.
I didn't even start it. Okay, now I'm starting.
All right, thank you. I've heard about these meetings. I've been getting some information about it. And when I drove by, because I live right around the corner, I saw the cars and I said, "Oh, this has got to be another meeting." First of all, I want to thank, I'm so thankful for a steadfast fire marshal who doesn't need to have a salesman tell him how to fight a fire. Secondly, a couple of things I wanted to say. The citizens have already covered because, you know, you're smart. And thirdly, the filling, the filling of that dirt, I got heard of from somebody who lives on Ballard, as Jim has said here, I don't even know why you're considering having another meeting after this meeting. There's been so many citizens that are truly upset about things and have logical factual reasons for not continuing this. Honestly, I have to side with the citizens here, nothing against anyone, but due diligence, there are a lot of facts here that really make it questionable. And if you're going to continue with this, which I'm sure you will because you're bored, be sure, I'm sure, and I'm sure you will be, have everything, don't let anything go. Watch it, see every die dotted, every T crossed, which I'm sure you will. But it seems like from what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing tonight, I mean, I figured when I heard the description that there would be an interest more to the plan. So when I came in here and somebody told me that, I wasn't surprised. I'm not surprised at all. And the concern, my great concern for the citizens for our area is I've seen these news reports across the country for the last couple of years about senior citizens' facilities much larger than this, but when they can't get the buildings filled, and this is a much smaller, this would be a much smaller building unless it becomes even larger, I don't know. What's the next story? Then who goes into those buildings? And anyone goes into those buildings, any age? And that becomes even more questionable for the safety and security of the people there and for the residents in our surrounding area and for Harrison Township and McComb County. Thank you very much.
My name is Terry and I live at 26194 Ballard. And I agree with everything that everybody said out there. I don't know why, you know, when you see greenery that you have to build on it all the time, you know, where do the animals get to go? I'm a little offended that some of you look really bored and disgusted with our comments. We voted, okay? We voted for you, okay? Well, anyways, you're supposed to work for us. You're supposed to be on our side. I don't know if any one of you would like to look out your front room window to that. I mean, I, you know, would you? I don't know where you live and out of respect, I really don't care where you grew up. This has nothing to do with that. This has to do with, don't look at the dollar signs. Listen to the people that live here already, that live on that street, that enjoy the tranquility of it, you know? We don't have a lot of lights. Now you're going to put a parking lot there. It has to be lit for the residents to come and go. I mean, just, you wouldn't want it in front of your eyes. Let's just say that. Because I think if you lived on Ballard, you wouldn't agree to this. And props to our fire chief. Please, don't approve anything.
I think that gentleman still wanted to finish.
I'm sorry. They have Sensacks.
I have the right to make a motion. You've got to move those calls in. I have the right to close at any time. Again, with the motion to close the office.
I wasn't going to speak tonight.
Hold on a moment, please. May I defer to our counsel?
You'd have to discuss that motion.
You'd need the support. You just hold on for just a second, please. Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
What?
Please, just let us follow through with our procedure. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion to close and a second discussion on the motion.
Yes, we've given a lot of latitude. We asked that the comments pertain strictly to the changes today and the majority of them have gone off topic to comments previously brought up.
Let us, let us follow our process, please. Please, just let us follow our process. Please.
Don't go on your street.
These guys are choicers, man.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Roll call, please, Mr. Parker.
Member Devlin. The motion is to close. Oh, sorry. Member Bloom.
The motion is to close the public hearing.
Member Bloom.
Yes.
Member Devlin.
Yes.
Member Tomonello.
Yes.
Chair Murray.
No. Motion carries.
38 people under the age of 55 can live in this unit. By Michigan law.
Hold on. Mr. Tomonello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a few things. So first of all, I just want to go over PUDs again. I put a lot of thought and I've worked on this most of the day. So there's, you've heard our planner talk about PUDs and a few other people. And they are, they're basically a, you know, it's a plan where you can be flexible. Typically, if you have a large piece of property, maybe a lot of it's wetlands, you can cluster homes, maybe a little bit closer together, maybe a little bit closer to the road. That's one thing that can be achieved with a PUD. That gives the developer some flexibility, right? The second is parcel sizes and shapes. For example, one might require a 1,500 square foot minimum parcel. This is actually from the Michigan State University Extension for Planning Unit Development. So basically, the square foot minimum parcel size or a parcel that is 100 foot by 150 feet size, that means that two or three parcels per acre can be built. So if one has 10 acres, they may be able to create 25 parcels after land for streets is taken out. A PUD will allow for clustering, so the 25 parcels occupy only five to 10 acres because there's a desire to keep open space wetland, which we're talking about today. So the PUD allows for each parcel to be about 7,500 square foot, but the overall density of 25, which is the calculations based on what I talked about, is still only 25 for the 10 acres. So just because you have 10 acres doesn't mean you can build more. So with that said, and I've said this many times to the developer, to the people here, I would like to make a motion. I really have a problem with density. So give me just a minute to collect my papers here. My question would be to the attorney, part of my motion, I was going to approve the special land use standards. Is that, would that be appropriate?
That's required, yes.
Okay, so if I can, and please bear with me. So I would like to make a motion to deny the PUD request and send the, please, send the recommendation to the Board of Directors that case 16-22 PUD Common Sale Investment Group, 26755 Ballard, property 171230151004 be denied for the following reasons. The project does not align with the spirit of the PUD ordinance and requirements. Proposed density is not consistent with what would be expected from a development under the conventional standards of the zoning ordinance. Proposed property is zone single-family residential. The proposed project is more than half the allowable density as defined in the master plan for this parcel size. The parcel does not meet the minimum required size and acreage for construction in a residential zone. The proposed PUD site is not located at the intersection of two roads or situated in such a manner that transitional or higher intensity uses are located around the majority of the perimeter of the proposed development. The property does not provide innovation in land use, varieties of design, layout, and structure construction while preserving the intent and integrity of the township master plan. Rear fire access road does not meet Item D103.1 of the 2015 International Fire Code. No fire access road exists on the west side of the proposed development. The omission of this access road will inhibit firefighting operations on the west side of the property. This omission will also create congestion to access the north fire access road and prevent occupant obstructions or ongoing fire operations on our projects. In addition and furthermore, the project deviations are as follows. The proposed landscape buffer in the Liverburn is being, is being required, is being proposed. There's a proposed maximum building length of 191. The ordinance maximum is 150. Proposed density of 74 units, maximum liable per the ordinance is 36 to 38 units for the 5.18 acres. And also, the ordinance requires a minimum of 40 acre site in a residential area. Proposed parking is 52 spots. Required parking spots required at the proposed density is 82. Proposed landscape setback from the building is 35 foot. Required landscape setback is 50. The proposed roof requires a six foot height deviation from the building requirements. For the special land use standards, number one, proposed use shall be of such location, size, and character that will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development in the surrounding neighborhood and applicable regulations of the zoning district in which it is located. The response is the proposed use is not consistent with the size, character, and harmony of the surrounding neighborhood. Number two, the proposed use shall be of nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, taking into consideration vehicular turning movements in relationship to routes, traffic flow, proximity and relationship to intersections, adequacy of site distances, location, access of off-street parking, and provisions for pedestrian traffic with particular attention to minimizing pedestrian vehicle conflicts. Because of the high density requested for this PUD, vehicular and pedestrian traffic will increase. Although any development will increase traffic patterns in that area, the proposed density being as high as it is will burden Ballard, which is a two-lane road with steep stormwater swales and ditches. Number three, the proposed use shall be designated as the location, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation of any such proposed use to eliminate any possible nuisance emulating therefrom which may be obnoxious to the occupants of other nearby uses permitted, whether by reason of dust, noise, fuel, vibration, smoker lights. The proposed PUD is for multifamily use. Density and number of units will affect the overall cohesiveness of the neighborhood. Homes on Ballard Street have large lots and side yards. The potential number of residents in this complex may change the dynamic of the neighborhood. The proposed use, number four, the proposed use shall be such that the proposed location and height of the building structures and location, nature and height of walls, fences and landscaping will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land and buildings unreasonably affect their value. Establishing a multi-unit development surrounded by single-family residential homes which is twice as high and several times the size of any adjacent structure may affect property values. Placement of this PUD in an existing single-family residential neighborhood and not under main thoroughfare as depicted in the PUD requirements may deter single-family homebuyers from settling in that area and affect values. Number five, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land uses in regards to prevailing habits, convenience of access by prospective patrons, continuing of development and need for particular services and facilities in specific areas of township. The proposed PUD will relate harmoniously with the surrounding area. The proposed density will surely affect convenience and access of traffic patterns. Bear with me, please. Number six, the proposed use will service a public convenience... Number six, the proposed use will service a public convenience at the proposed location. The proposed PUD project will offer a public convenience, which is housing for those over fifty-five years of age. Potential risks include family members under the age of fifty-five will be allowed, and there is no limitation on their occupants in a unit. The proposed, number seven, the proposed use is so designed, located, planned, and operated so that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. Although the multifamily units do not affect the public health and safety, safety and welfare of residents, the project as presented at an unreasonable density may in fact have a negative effect on the neighborhood. The proposed use, number eight, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of property in the vicinity in which it is located and will not be detrimental to existing and other permitted land uses in the zoning district. And again, establishing a multifamily development surrounded by single-family homes, which are twice as high and several times the size of any adjacent structure, may affect property values. Placement of the PUD in existing family residential neighborhood and not in a main thoroughfare may deter single-family homebuyers from settling in that area and affect values. That's my motion.
To deny recommendation to the Board of Trustees for the items stated, particularly the eight special land use standards in which Mr. Tomminallo indicated that this requested PUD does not meet any of the eight standards. Do I have a second?
I would second that. I'd like to, just for, you know, clarification on my personal views, and they're just my personal views on it, but my seconding the motion is based primarily on two things. Number one, the waiver of the minimum acreage requirements set forth in section seventeen point three-three being four, there's three subparts to it. Originally, I was concerned whether any of those were met. I'm satisfied that maybe number two could be met, given the 2015 DDA clarification maybe of the 2010 master plan. But I do not believe that number one and number three have been met. And with respect to the eight standards, I'm particularly concerned that standards one, four, and six have not been met, and of these eight standards, they all have to be met. So for those reasons, those are the primary reasons, I second the motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Tomminallo as stated and a second by Mr. Bloom as referenced. Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, again, I'd like to give my personal opinion before we vote. We received a letter from the county, the Office of Senior Services, and I think everyone can agree that there is a need for this type of facility. We've seen a lot of proposals brought to us, and we get the same reaction, not in my neighborhood, but they do have to go somewhere.
Please, let us follow through with our procedure.
Also, from what we've seen as far as a public benefit, I would have to say this is probably one of the better public benefits that we've seen with what they're willing to do, working with the Tucker Senior Center and helping out seniors. However, the redevelopment plan, that keeps getting referenced, the master plan, does focus on the entire hospital site. This is just a portion and does not address the current vacant hospital, just a small building. And it leads to, you know, the hypothetical of what happens with the rest of that site in the future if we allow this at this density, being that the other site is three to four times the size, would be about three and a half more of these buildings at the same density. And I believe that would be way, way too much for the neighborhood. Whereas if it was the entire site, this would look a lot more appealing. And I know they brought up that, you know, they hope to, the addition of this would bring on future development on the site. But it's still, you know, it's a concern over what would happen with the rest of the site because we're only focusing on this portion. So those are my feelings on the motion.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Any other discussion? Any other comments?
Yes, I also believe that this is, this type of product is desperately needed in our community. When we say aging in place, that doesn't mean age in the same colonial that you've raised your children and have lived in for thirty years. It means that you can age in the community in a dwelling unit that you will be safe in, whether that means shower rails or elevators, no stairs, whatever that is. And there's a whole bunch of research on how aging in place means aging somewhere safe. I've gone through this in my life. I'm sure many of you have as well. We've heard from many people today who have, in a roundabout way, talked about their own issues with either their kids not being able to find single-family dwellings, or their parents having to live with them, or their sister having to live with them. And if we were able to offer this dwelling opportunity, then our seniors could stay in the community. And then that housing stock would then be freed up for new, younger families who can take stairs and who can take stairs.
Please, please. This is my opinion. This is, this is my opinion. This is procedural, please. And I'm asking as volunteer to offer this opinion. So having said that, as far as this, this particular... Please.
I feel that this particular proposal is too dense for the site. I feel that the hospital is two stories. I feel that that facade is appropriate for this, the density in this neighborhood, to have more of a two-story building with fewer units. And so I just received this in the mail today, an advertisement to move into a twenty-nine-hundred-dollar apartment that is for seniors, fifty-five and over. And the reason this came to me in Harrison Township is because they think that there aren't enough opportunities for seniors in Harrison Township. So they signed this to me. Otherwise, they wouldn't be paying to send it to me. So, and I know from my own senses that we have a predominant amount of people over sixty-five in our community that we as a community need to start thinking about how we keep them here. Please, so that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll give my opinion. I will support what everyone up here has said. I think the density of this proposal on this site is just, it's just too high. And I agree with Ken talking about moving to a bigger site. I do think if this was approved, and then what happens to that bigger site is, you know, we don't want a multitude of these high-density developments popping up in a small area. So I do think it is a need for the township. I don't think the census numbers lie. We have an aging population, and every resident that's ever spoken up here has talked about the township and how much they love being here. And having opportunities for people to age in place and stay in this community, I think is something critical. And I think we need to look at our master plan and our 2015 redevelopment plan and make sure that they're in sync with each other. So we're not up here trying to...
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Since everyone has spoken, I will put in my two cents worth. I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree, I agree. This is two dots. This location is not the right location for this. I agree that we need senior living, and in my mind, it needs to be specific to seniors and offer more amenities specific to seniors as opposed to a community that could take a fifty-five-year-old plus, but then accommodate those that are younger, in my opinion. The density, the density is too high, the height is too high, the size is too large, the fire issues are a huge concern, the safety issues are a huge concern, the hit to the township utilities is a huge concern. So with that as... Discussion on the motion. Is there anything more to say before we take the vote?
The only thing I would like to make clear is that this application before us, and this motion, pertains to one application for affordable independent living on one piece of property, subject to unique circumstances.
Correct.
This is not a reflection of whether affordable independent living is appropriate, needed in a general context in Harrison Township. I agree with the comments that were made, that it probably is. That's not what this is about on this project.
Correct. You are accurate.
This is limited only to this specific project and the specific facts before us.
And let me reiterate, the special land use standards noted in section seventeen oh one A, the eight special standard, the eight items that we follow. When I said earlier that we follow the rules, we do follow the rules. This is our bible. This is not, this is not anything personal. This is following the rules and the regulations that are set for, before us to make a decision. So with that, if there's no other discussion on this motion, if there's no other discussion on this motion, I would like to, please, take a roll.
Member Tomminallo.
Yes.
Member Bloom.
Yes.
Member Devlin.
Yes.
Member Mulder.
Yes.
Member O'Parker.
Yes.
Chair Murray.
Yes.
Yes, your recommendation. On the recommendation to the Board of Trustees. I have a motion to adjourn. Seconded. Our next, our next meeting is Thursday, September fifteenth, 2022. We will see you then.